Start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Just a quick announcement, Kim is not here tonight. She's got a medical issue, so hopefully she'll be back next week. Warrant and bills, all been signed up?
Yep.
Great, thank you. We're going to table the minutes, and we'll take those up at the next meeting. Town administrator's weekly update.
Nope.
None this week? Terrific. Department heads, did I miss something? Oh, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second? In favor? Okay, thank you. Department head reports. APAT.
Evening, everyone. Michael, APAT manager. I'm here to make a public statement. There's been talk of some of APAT, or some of the videos or town meetings that have been, are to be broadcasted on APAT, weren't in a timely, up in a timely manner. One in particular would be candidate's night, and simply for public record, I would like to make a statement that that video was, well, the meeting was on the 6th, held on the 6th. The video, I don't believe, was published until the 10th or the 13th, somewhere in that window. And that was strictly due to my negligence of not getting that up in time. I can make excuses for it, but it simply wasn't put up in a timely manner based on my inability to get it out to the public in a three-day timeframe.
Great.
I just want to make that statement for public record.
Thank you for that, Mike. And we've had, David and I have had a chance to talk to Mike and sort of reinforce the importance of, you know, meeting the three-day timeframe that has been established for the posting of the videos. And Mike understands that, we're going to do our best to get that done.
Absolutely.
If for whatever reason it can't get down, he'll get in touch with Jennifer, and the selectmen will be notified, but you should all be aware that every effort will be done to make those postings on a timely manner.
And if a video isn't up in time, and you are concerned, or if it's not up within a day or two, you can always email apat@actonmaine.org, and I will be sure to jump on the, that production of that video as soon as I can, if I'm missing one or two. But, yeah, I've been doing this for 10 years, and I, like, I got a 98%, 99% record of getting everything online in time, so one or two will slip through my fingertips, and I apologize, it was my failure, and like you said, I will try to make sure things are up in a timely manner and avoid...
Well, thanks for the explanation. No need to fall on your sword over this, so, and we'll just go forward. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot, Mike.
Okay. Fire department. Is the fire department here? Were they planning to come, Jennifer?
I just received a call from Chief Smith saying that Wayneham would be here on his behalf.
Okay, why don't we hold on that? Great. The rec department.
He's walking in.
Yeah, he's walking in right now.
Well, that's all right, we can get ready. Let's, we can go back.
Nobody's more important, yeah, they're great.
I almost said, "Good morning." Good evening.
Good evening.
Sam with the rec department. I wanted to kind of go over where we have a lot of planning going on. One of the things that we had talked to you about that we were going to be doing is we were going to be doing soccer clinics. However, we ended up dropping that because of some very disrespectful conversation back and forth with the gentleman, and the fact that he couldn't keep up with any timeframes that he would give me. So we figured it was best to kind of cut our losses before we jumped into it, and not knowing how things were going to go with the kids with him. Also, we have a couple fundraising ideas, or not ideas, but plans that we want to make happen, one of which that I wanted to touch base with is September 11th. Any more follow-up on September 11th?
That's the one that she asked for, permission to have liquor at.
Oh, okay, all right.
We haven't really discussed that.
We haven't. I think we had asked you to come back with more information about the event. Was that, was that correct?
Yeah, we didn't even know what the event was.
Yeah, I wanted to get a little, you wanted alcohol there, where there was some...
I didn't necessarily want the alcohol.
There was a plan to have alcohol.
Well, I had, a truck had emailed me asking.
Yeah, or consideration of it.
So what's the event?
So it's a car show slash, and it's at the same time as the tractor pulls, and then a vendor. So basically, we would charge for vendor fees, so whoever has a table set up would end up paying, and it would be a fundraising event. Car show would be free to enter, just kind of give people something to tinker around, to look around at, and then we'd have a couple food trucks.
So you're going to have tractor pulls, car show, this all at the same time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the tractor pulls are down bottom, just like they always are. The cars would be up top, probably around the same area that they usually are for the original old-style cars.
Yep.
Between there and then where the Volkswagens go, kind of lay that out, and then it would be anywhere from like one to three food trucks, and then in the barns...
Food and stuff there.
Yeah.
Sounds, sounds like, sounds like the fair.
Yeah, and then it would be some activities, like some games in that for the kids. Some games in that for the kids.
Okay.
What's the timeframe? A couple hours, three hours?
Yeah, that one would probably be like a nine to two.
Nine to two?
Nine to two. So it would be a few hours in the earlier day, because usually, we wanted to do it at the same time as the tractor pull, because it would give more things to look at, and with being nine to two, it kind of gives that idea that the tractor pull is usually done around two.
I mean, it's a benefit, correct?
Yeah, it's a fundraising...
I, I thought about this, because, you know, when it was mentioned last time, with that kind of event, with the tractor pulls and the car show and all that, I don't find it any different than what the fair and stuff does.
The fair has alcohol.
Can I make a recommendation?
I'm sorry?
Can I make a recommendation?
Please.
That, so, because the town's going to be using the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds is looking for the town of Acton's liability insurance to cover any events that happen during this, so I would recommend that you get a legal opinion before you make a decision.
We can do that.
The town's insurance is going to be the one covering everything there, other than the tractor pulls, because that's outside of our...
Sounds like a plan, Jennifer.
So the tractor pulls are a separate event?
Tractor pulls are the separate.
Okay.
But we will be turning over our insurance, listing the fairground as an entity, should...
What do you mean, the tractor pulls are separate?
Because that's a different...
Are you sponsoring that as well?
No, that's a different organization. That's the Southern Maine Tractor Pull.
Going on the same day.
Tractor pulls. It'd just be the same day, the, if you were to contemplate with the alcohol, I don't care if the alcohol's a go or a no. That one is one, she has her own full liability insurance, everything that you would need. She's got the fence that goes around, all the little pinpoints that I never knew about, and she's actually gotten her license through here.
She being who? The, the alcohol?
The alcohol.
Yeah, it's one of the, it's one of the one-day events that you've...
Yeah, she does it for the weddings and stuff.
Yeah, and the other thing is the food trucks and stuff, again, we want to make sure that we have copies of their, that they're state-inspected, state-licensed food, because it's the town, the town's going to take responsibility for the event.
I, I guess I wasn't aware that there were two events taking place at the same time. That kind of complicates them. I'm not quite sure how, but something about that, I'd have to think about, but that, I think council's review of that would be wise.
Tractor pulls are pretty much like every other weekend over there.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, so they're, they're a constant, and you don't actually go down around, usually it's just the group that's down around, you just stay up at the top of the hill where everything's parked.
You know, if there, if we have a tent there or an event with, with alcohol being served, they could be dragged into that. I think we need to at least consider it, but we'll get back to you on it, okay?
Perfect. And if, I mean, even if the alcohol ends up being a no-go, if I can get a yay or a nay on the event itself as soon as possible, because we're kind of now dragging it to where I'm going to start having some troubles getting...
Does the town have any expense associated with this, that we need to be, so...
It's just having the insurance, we have, you know...
The fair association is allowing use of the field, there's no expense on the town.
The only thing that we would be liable at all is if we had to plug in for power, which food trucks are usually self-sufficient, so we don't have to worry about them, and it would be just that one day worth of power that we would use. So out of my head, I would think a max of $100 would be, and we would make that anyways.
Okay. Why don't you let us get back on, on the event and on the alcohol, let's handle it all at one item.
We might have to look at it legally, see what we're allowing.
Yeah, yeah, let's get the legal review and...
We don't want to hold you up.
This shouldn't take long.
Perfect.
No, no, we, we understand you need to know.
And then the only other thing I have is, I had talked, talked briefly about doing a cornhole tournament, as, again, another fundraiser, and the fundraiser would go towards the playground and enhancing the rec in general, getting more, I want to say, more tools per se, so things for cheer, whether it be an octagon mat that's like $600, or various other equipments.
Training.
Yeah. So we've talked about doing a cornhole tournament. Well, I ended up talking with Barn Lights about doing something else, and he had actually brought that up. He goes, "We're definitely interested in hosting that here," so it would be on them, rec-sponsored, but it would be Barn Lights that would be basically the one that would be liable, it would be everything over there. Is that something that would be okay, because we're looking at July 9th?
What do you, would the rec's revenue stream from this basically be donations?
It would all be donations.
And all the other revenues would go to Barn Lights?
No, there'd be, so what it would, what it would be is, it would be $30 per team, so $15 a person, to do the competition for the, the cornhole. 50% of what is raised for the competition would go to the winner, and the 50% would go towards the fundraising event for the, the rec. Everything else, like, we would have no cost associated with it.
Okay. So, so their interest in this is supporting the rec department, but also there are revenues to them from food and beverage and things that they may be selling?
Yeah, because they're already doing a community day that day anyways, and their community day with their band ends at four, so they were looking, they were like, "Oh, we could start this right at four and go right in, we could serve dinner, we can..."
I don't see any issue with that.
No, I, no, I don't think that's a good idea.
I think it's great, good for you, thanks for doing, thanks for taking the initiative on this.
When they came in for their alcohol license, they talked about wanting to help the community and all that, so I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and we've, we've talked to them quite often, because that's where we do our craft fair, that we donate all the funds for the library and, yeah.
Thanks for your energy, Sam.
We just want to make sure that the 50/50, that, so we have to figure out who's going to be handling the money, because somebody's going to be paying for their registrations, and then the payout to the winner, it all needs to go through the town books, not giving them cash, you know, we need to pay them out, we need to still follow our financial policies.
All right, so...
So we'd have to bring the money here and then...
Sounds like you need to connect with...
Okay, that works.
Because we need to have a record, and we need to account for everything, so...
Okay. So I will be, I will be the one that will probably be there, taking all money in that anyways, because I'll probably end up staying for the entire event, just to kind of have my presence there.
We can work on the details, but...
So Kelly and Jennifer can provide some advice on how that should be handled?
Perfect.
What records, et cetera? Fair enough.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Hi, Bernard Broder. I just have a couple concerns I want to express on this. One, this one I'm not, I don't feel really strongly about, but I think it's a consideration that, you know, 9/11 is a somber day, it's not party time, and with that in mind, while I, I guess I wouldn't object to, you know, the town hosting an event on 9/11, I really don't support the town sponsoring an event involving alcohol, really at any event, I don't think it's a good policy. General liability policies don't cover exposure for alcohol consumption, you have to have liquor liability policy for that. Now, this vendor might, but that's not going to cover the town unless you're an additional named insured on her policy, or additional insured for the event. But the larger thing for me is, especially where it's just for a couple hours, I think people can go to an event for a couple hours without alcohol, and on 9/11, I don't think the town should be encouraging it in any way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right?
What about Barn Lights, they're going to be serving alcohol, that one there?
Cease to be, that's...
But that's not a town event.
That's, that's...
Well, they're doing a fundraiser for the rec, right?
Yeah, but what I heard her say was that that was sponsored, that was their event.
Okay, okay, so it's different.
We're just piggybacking on that.
Okay, I just wanted to...
You might have got that right.
Treat one incident differently than another.
We're going to do a cornhole tournament, but their insurance is covering their own property.
Yeah, okay.
They're doing it in sponsorship for us.
Okay, cool.
All the food, beverages, they're managing, we've got nothing to do with that.
The only thing we do is just save the money for people that want to register for the event.
Yep, okay, awesome.
Great, thank you. Any other department heads' reports?
Fire department.
Fire department, thank you.
Good evening, Wayneham, deputy fire chief. I'm here in Rick's absence for, I got a letter, I'll read from him to you guys. Hello, board, I'm looking for support in a waiver from the purchasing policy for the purchase of the equipment approved at the town meeting because of the three-bid requirement not being practical. For the compression device, Stryker is the only company still in business with a Maine EMS-approved compression device, and the rep in this area is the only one authorized to sell from Stryker. For the power load system, we have to buy Stryker power load because it is the only one compatible with our ambulance and our stretcher. Again, the Stryker rep is the only one in this area approved to sell said device. These are both vital pieces of equipment approved at the town meeting, and I look for your support in waiving the bid process to expedite the purchase and deployment of these items. Thank you, Chief Smith.
I just want to point out that he's not here for medical reasons as well, it was his intention to be here.
Am I the new rep for the fire department?
You are.
Yeah. I'd like to meet with the chief and just hear the details of this, and it all sounds perfectly reasonable, I, but I'd like to just take a moment and...
He did offer, he did offer to be on phone if possible, he would like to deal with this tonight, there's several months out to get these parts.
Well, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day...
He would like to speak with you.
The decision we make tonight, it's a pretty easy decision, because we can only get it from this one individual. The problem we're having is, the problem, when we go through the bid process, we go, he gets his prices, which he did, they got their prices in, I don't know, March, it was March. Those numbers were given to the finance committee, okay? And so, I believe there was two, I thought there was two prices, but one of them we couldn't, they couldn't use because of whatever.
It's not approved by me.
Yeah, it's not approved.
He did submit two on one of them.
So, so we got the two, because that's the only two you could get, that went through the whole finance process between us, the finance committee, and then, I believe, at town meeting, there is a, I believe it even says Stryker, whatever, I mean, it's pretty much plain Jane and the cost, and we turn around now and take what we've already approved, and then go back out for a three, three bid.
Not suggesting that.
No, but all we're going to do is prolong this, okay, with something that really we can take care of tonight.
And again, he really would like to speak to you on the phone, he actually asked me to ask who to let him call you. He likes to talk. I mean, it's an option, but...
I mean, myself, I just, I, I think we, this is a situation where it's been voted in, it's gone through the finance committee, it's gone through us, through the budget process, for us to go back out on it, it's no different than the generator last year, it was the same exact thing with the generator, we had two bids, they were the only two bids we got, and we, all we'd be doing is actually putting ourselves in a situation where we're probably paying more money.
Well, and again, it's the only provider for the items that we are already, our stretcher's already a Stryker, the ambulance is already set up for a Stryker when we purchase the ambulance, because that's a stretcher we had. And then the compression device, that's the only one approved by State of Maine EMS, which is where the other bid came from, but that device is not...
We do the same thing with our salt, we only got two providers, really with our salt, we end up, that's what we end up having to do, you know, sometime you have to divert from the three-bid process because of circumstances.
How much is it? I don't have the numbers, should we give you the numbers to bring?
Twenty-some thousand bucks, I ain't got the warrant in front of me.
Yeah, it's written in the warrant.
I don't have the warrant in front of me.
You thought it was 20, David?
It's, I thought that was 20-some thousand dollars.
26,1 and something to the other.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Well, when, when this went through the budget process, while the, I believe you solicited those quotes.
Yes.
There was, was there, has there been a formal bid process?
That was, that was what we considered our bid process, you know, they got to go and get the prices for us so they know what they're doing.
I got to tell you, from my experience, a bid process is a very specific process that has sort of legal elements to it, and receiving quotes is sort of the first start of that, is the first phase of it. And so, I tend to be pretty religious about bid process, I understand it may be sole source, and, and there may not be any other options, I get it, but when we approve the budget for this, I don't believe there was a review of any of those documents, at least not by me, now maybe you did, David, but, and it's a, it's a $20,000 item. So I would like to, is, is there a timeframe or a time urgency to this that says it has to be done tonight, or can it be done next week?
What's the waiting?
It's, like Jennifer said, there's a waiting, I mean, we're months out from even receiving it to begin with, the sooner we start our order, the sooner it gets in the process again, you know, we've got to schedule installation for the power stretcher, on the ambulances, there's so many moving parts, and obviously today's world and economy we live in, it's...
You're literally going to go back to the same company, get the same, try to get the same price.
Because there is no, there's nobody else. That's the, the tough part of our industry specifically, is there's only limited resources that we can go to to even get the quotes to begin with, and these are the only ones that are working with our equipment, existing equipment.
So I have the fire chief on the phone, the Lucas is at $19,750, the other item is a little over $25,000. He said they, one of them was six weeks out, and the other one is nine weeks out. Chief Smith, just real quick, you've got two bids on one of these, didn't you?
No, there's only one dealer for both of them.
Both of them, okay.
So if we're going to out to bid, it's not really going to accomplish anything.
I, I don't think it's going to go out to bid. I think, though, good business is when there's been a bid process, and we have a policy to, or there's been a process to solicit quotes, we have a policy that indicates we need to bid anything over $5,000. If you're going to deviate from that, I think there ought to be a review of that process. That's just my, my training, and so all I'm suggesting is I take the time, and by next week, I'm sure I can meet with Rick, or talk with him on the phone, and my guess is this could be resolved simply, but I, I would, I would be a little more deliberate about having an opportunity to talk to the chief, maybe look at what he's done, so that personally I can be comfortable that in fact, there's a good reason not to send it out to bid. Based on what I hear right now, it sounds like a great, or a good, a good rationale for not doing it, but Christ, I haven't looked at anything, and I think I should. That's my, my view on it.
Were they in the budget book, right, these quotes?
I have the updated quotes in front of me.
Okay, you, so the board hasn't seen them?
No, you haven't seen them?
No, because I had to reach back out to get updated pricing, because no one gives a guaranteed price for greater than six months, and that's the problem with our budget system.
Rick, can this wait one week?
I have to ask for quotes in January that need to still be good in July, and nobody will do that.
Rick, any consequence to meeting, waiting one week? We'll put it on next week's agenda, and you and I will have an opportunity to just spend 15 minutes talking about this, and I can look at what you've got.
Tom, I'm more than happy to talk about it now, because this stuff is life-saving equipment, there is only one company we can buy it from, there's no other options, there's no ability to go out to bid, because Stryker is the only company we can buy these items from, we have to buy them from Stryker, the Stryker rep for New England is the corporate rep, not some local dealer. So the guy we're buying it from is the company we're buying it from, and it's the only place we can buy them. The chest compression, the Lucas device, is the only approved device to be used in the State of Maine. There's a second device that we could have gone out for, that company has since gone defunct, and is no longer in existence.
Is this a list price they're offering you?
I can't, say that again?
Is it a list price?
Yes.
No discount?
Well, we get, we get a discount from buying the two together, they gave us a discount for purchasing the two large items at the same time.
How much? What percent?
I would have to compare the two, the two things, but it was, sorry, you have to excuse me, I'm sick, which is why I'm not there tonight.
It's not the way you do business.
They were, the prices are good prices, and they threw in some stuff, some service contracts and stuff like that for less than you would normally pay, because we're buying these items together. We're, we're getting a fair deal, board, I've, I've been keeping apprised of the prices of these things, we're, we're getting a good price. If we wanted to go out to bid for a different stretcher load system, we'd have to also go out to bid for a different stretcher, and so we'd have to go rebuild, and you'd be talking about $50,000 to $60,000 instead of 25.
Damn.
It's, it's kind of the problem that we run into with firing EMS equipment, because we have to use equipment that's approved, and then once you're in an ecosystem, you're kind of stuck in the ecosystem unless you want to change everything.
Okay.
So when we have Stryker stretchers, we have to use Stryker power load systems, because that's the only option.
I'll tell you what, can we defer this item until the end of the meeting? Give me a chance to think about this? I don't, you know, I need to think about things, so...
And Rick, can you email me the, the documents, the board is going to have an executive session for something else, so I can at least print them and have them look at it before the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I can do that. I, again, would strongly encourage the board to approve this waiver, it's standard practice for things we've done in the past, and this is life-saving equipment that we need to get into the town. The town has already approved it at the values that fit, and it's specifically said in the town meeting notes, for those companies' equipment, very specific, so if the towns' people are on board, I feel the board should take what the towns' people, who they represent, have said.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we're going to move that, he's, said he's going to bring it up a little later on, so we're, we'll be in touch.
We'll come back to it at the end of the meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Any other department head reports?
Yes, sir. It's fine. Just an update, I talked to Tom Hawkins yesterday, he's going to grind our brush for us up to the shed and up to the transfer station, and now, a week or two, he'll be here, I'm going to coordinate it, set it all up, I'll get him down in the shed first, and I'm sending him up to the dump, so hopefully by middle of the month, we'll have that all cleaned up.
Nice.
Very nice.
I saw that pile-up day at the transfer station, that's getting pretty big up there.
Yeah, I told him that, and he said, "Ah, it is what it is," he said, "They'll take care of it," so, all right, that's it.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Anyone else? Okay. Old business, New Bridge Road, fence letter.
So based on some recent information, I'm going to ask these tables until next week?
Fair enough, okay. Roof bid, this is the metal roof?
Yes.
I, I failed to get that bid together this week, that will be done by next week.
Okay, great.
That's on me.
So by get it together, you're looking for specifications on material, et cetera. Fair enough. Petition, legal advice, email. We received an email from a resident sort of questioning the action that was taken at the last board meeting regarding a vote that we took to have MMNA review and work with a group that is planning to put forth a petition to move from a form of town meeting to a ballot process. I think that's an accurate description. And the question was raised about, is that an appropriate use of town resource to assist a private group on, on a petition? And David and I have had a chance to talk about this. I thought it was a, it was a.
I'm sorry.
No, okay. I thought it was a good issue that raised and warranted a discussion and consideration of this. This particular petition, and I think probably most petitions, would be sent to MMNA and we pay a standard fee to them. And so this legal work is basically all encompassed in that standard fee, so it's not an additional charge to the town. In other words, it's, think about it as a no cost. The fee is X and whether we send them this much legal work or that much legal work, it's basically the fee covers that. And it's a fee that is assessed to, comparable fee to all towns? Do I have that correct?
Yeah, based on population.
Based on population. There's a scale and so regardless of how much we use it, it really doesn't matter what the cost is. So I, I think the issue of it being public funds supporting private citizens initiative is sort of a, a non-issue. Having said that, I think we believe that it's worthwhile and appropriate for us to have a policy that would be adopted so that anyone who might be involved in trying to pursue a petition would understand the extent to which that kind of service can be available to them as they consider a petition, draft one, be reviewed by MMNA. This would only be for petitions that it would be appropriate to be reviewed by MMNA. If it has to go to town council for whatever reason, then we would not participate in that process. That would be the responsibility or for whoever is drafting that petition. But where this is sort of a no cost to the town and can help ensure that all the efforts people go through to gain the signatures will not let it get thrown out because it's not drafted correctly, I think it's just a good service that we could offer people. So at a future meeting, we're going to basically be passing a policy, we'll sort of clarify that, so that everyone who's involved in drafting a petition will understand how those services are available consistently to all, to everyone in the public, all of our residents.
This has never been an issue before. I mean, as far as I know, I've never seen anybody ask for this. So this isn't like we bend over backwards and do something for somebody else that we didn't do for somebody else. So the way I look at this whole petition deal was, this has been discussed around town that there's a lot of people who feel that this is something that we ought to put forward. Us as select board members, we could put this forward without a petition. I thought it was a good idea to put the petition out there that way there. We get the consent, the consensus of, you know, is this, is this something we really want to do? Because it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
But, sorry, excuse me. But by, by doing it this way here, because at the end of the day, if they come in with a petition and it's wrong, we send it to the MMA, okay, and they tell us, well, it's going to go there anyways. At the end of the day, we're just saving one step. Make sure that they don't have to go through the whole process again. I have no issue that if somebody on a different petition came forward, would do the same thing. So we're not, with the, with the email that was sent through, it, I don't know, we were not spending any extra, any town money. It's all, it's all stuff that would be done in the first place. We're not putting it to council, so there's nothing there, Brad or anybody like that's not going to see this. But I have no issue with creating a policy at some point, make sure that this, this happens.
Any comment on this?
Could you explain the policy again, Tom?
Sure. And I believe, and this is an area I need to spend some more time with Jennifer on, but there are certain kinds of petitions that MMNA will consider for review. And Jennifer, those are states, or those are in the statute?
Things that fall under home rule, state statute type changes.
So for those petitions that fall within that area, MMNA is available and would provide counsel and advice on how to word those. If it was, for example, a petition dealing with a land use matter or some, they're not going to handle that. That's going to have to go to land use council. So for those, we're not going to be providing tough, excuse me, town resources to support the review and drafting of that. But if they can go to MMNA, it would. And so it would be available to anyone, regardless of what that petition might be. If it's a citizens initiative and they're trying to get that petition circulated and signed and approved, it would be wise for them to get that review in advance to make sure that when it's complete and presumably presented, that it's, it's all, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. So we're going to put together a policy that will effectively cover that. Hopefully much was in sync that I just did. So any further questions on that?
Yeah, I was at the town meeting myself and I got there late because I had an animal call and I left early because I had to go out on an animal investigation, but I was there fairly early and they were still counting the votes for the warrant finance, so that's pretty early. But the first vote I noticed that they had a count, a hand count on, there was only forty-four votes cast. When I left, the article before I left the town meeting, there was only twenty-eight votes cast on that vote right there, you know? So I was kind of hoping that the Board would move it forward because it's become somewhat of a, a town issue, you know what I mean? It's, is not really full accountability with twenty-eight people voting on that many million dollars of a budget, you know? And unlike the school budget where, when the school folks go out and vote, it's just the school people on that ballot, I believe this would have, if this was on the ballot, this question would go with all the town candidates and everything? Is that the same ballot?
Have to.
Yeah. Every year when a selectman wins, the winner usually averages around two fifty, somewhere like that. And if you do it above two fifty, you're doing really well. So it's going to draw out the town meeting. If you add this, it's only going to draw out more. You're probably going to be a minimum of four, five hundred votes, probably closer to five hundred.
And I think that, not to interrupt you, but I think the thought was to do it in November, so you've got a governor's race, which is going to double.
Oh, is that when you want to put it on? That would be even bigger.
That was the original thoughts were, that they could get more people, the better.
No, the November, I don't want to do town, town vote in November, but I want to get this.
Oh, you don't want to ask the question? No, not a town vote.
I want to ask the question in November, yes.
That's all I mean.
That's even better.
Not town meeting, ask the question.
Yeah, that's what I wanted clarification, which election it was going to go on.
That was the conversation.
I think, I think we need to first get the petition signed and then we, you know, based on the timing of that, my guess is we're going to need some public hearings on this.
Yes, you would.
And.
Yeah, that was going to be.
Public hearing. I, I think this is an issue that there are legitimate points of view on both sides of it.
So do I.
And we need to let the community, you know, consider this and have an opportunity to hear pros and cons. There are some that would think, well, if we put the, the town meeting back in the, in the spring, along with the school budget, then perhaps that would increase attendance. I, I don't know. We, I think there's a lot to be considered here and so let's let the petition process go forward.
Okay.
And it will take us where it takes us.
So is the petition process still the same as it was last week, where you're going to have MMA look at the wording?
Yeah.
And help, that's, that's all still.
I think what we bring in the petition, we can send it out, have them go through it before you even sign anything on it. We don't want you wasting your time doing it. That's what we, we agreed on, so.
What you agreed, no, I'm sorry, but what you agreed on last week was for MMA to write the question. That's what this group has asked for, was for them to write the question.
I mean, this, you, you folks aren't deciding whether we're going or not. You're just allowing the people to speak.
Yeah.
And this is an issue. If, if I was a betting man, I bet it passes two to one. It's, this talk all over town.
You may be right, you may not be right.
Yeah.
Who knows?
Yeah, but let's, let's have the people, let's give them a chance.
The Board's not, I'm not going to stand in the way of that. I have my own view on it, as does the other board members, but quite frankly, that view is going to be as a voter.
Right.
You know, that's, that's where I get to express my view.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Well, I'm good with it then. Thank you.
Was there something else?
Well, no, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm doing.
Well, I thought that David, we were going to ask them to come and talk to us.
So what we originally talked about was having them present, present us.
Yes.
What they want.
And then we send it out.
Because obviously we can't, we don't want to call MMA and say, we, we want this petition. We want them to tell us what they want for a petition.
So that's different from last week.
Okay, well, I think it's a little bit confusion. So we, because we can't, we have to have somebody responsible for the petition.
No, I know, and I think that those people are here to speak.
Yeah, we, I think if, if the petition is written, then we will take it from there and go out and get the signatures.
Need some sort of scope of what needs to be, be proposed for them to do.
Who is the group? I don't even know who the group, is there a group here that's organizing? Is it you?
It could be Bernie, myself, and there's a few others that aren't here, you know? But I'm confident we'll get the signatures we need very quick.
Well, when you're ready to come and talk to the selectmen about what it is you're trying to achieve, the general scope, as you say, of the petition, why don't you come, you know, get on the agenda, come and talk to us about it, and then we can then create the, the availability of MMNA to assist.
Yeah, I guess the scope is to turn it from town meeting to a secret ballot. That's all at, at the polls, you know, in November. That's, it's that simple.
Yeah.
You know, I know in the past, when Larissa was a selectman, Larissa, or I think it was Tony and Bill, she would use MMA quite a bit for some of the private roads to check them out instead of using the town attorney. She did use the town attorneys, like on thirteen and Coldwood, and I remember reading those rulings, but she also used MMA. As a matter of fact, when our board was on the selectman, the one that, a big issue that went from elected to appointed clerk and treasurer, that article was written by MMA, not the town's attorney, because we didn't want to spend the money, because we knew it was a flat fee.
My only interest is making sure that we, that we're consistent, that if we're going to start to offer this availability of MMNA.
I think it's a great idea to have a policy.
We need a policy so that anybody who's trying to advance a petition knows that under certain circumstances, this service is available to them and they should take advantage of it. I don't want it to be arbitrary that we're going to allow this group to do it and not this group.
And I think that's a great idea for consistency, but past practice, they have used MMA quite a bit.
Okay.
Writing articles and to save money.
Yeah. Well, at this point, I am waiting for someone to approach with what they consider a draft question.
Yeah.
And you don't want to put dates in the question because the Board of Selectmen have the authority based on so many days on when you would put on a ballot. I was just saying November because that was the talk that, that we had had, so somebody.
Let me ask you something. We also don't want to put a, a group or citizens to be directly working with MMNA and, because that could get rather.
And they won't.
Frustrating for them. So they're going to have to go through a point of contact here that could be you, that, I don't know, we need to talk about who that's going to be.
Well, I mean, I'm your contact for all your legal, so what I hear.
But it could be a selectman, I don't know, we'd have to consider that. So somebody in the town governance structure will have to facilitate this effort with MMNA and the group that's advancing the petition.
So you want someone, whether it's this petition or a different one, they essentially come up with a draft wording.
Yeah.
And then we're going to send it to May Municipal via email. They'll make appropriate changes with your authority.
Yeah.
And then we'll give it back to the group and they'll go from there.
Usually our town, Jen, it's usually that point.
Hmm? And that's fine, I just, I didn't want to spring that on here. I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to talk about that, Jennifer. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a proposed draft for this issue. I did some research this afternoon and the town of Unity, Maine, put this very issue before their voters. So I have removed the word unity and substituted Acton. And I'm, I'm glad to read it and then give it to Jennifer if the Board wants to proceed. But here's, here's the wording that they put forth, I presume, but don't know that it was checked by council. Shall the town of Acton, starting with the 2023 annual town meeting, submit all warrant articles to be considered for the town meeting to the voters of the town in the format of secret ballot referendum questions and keep the polls open as required by law when said article or articles are voted upon. Special town meetings shall be set at the discretion of the select board or as may be required by citizen petition. I have no idea whether that's sufficient or not, but again, that's.
You get to add that last town poll.
Thank you.
I think it's a good start. I think there's some stuff we'd have to add to it.
You have any comments on this, Melissa?
No, no, I think, I think right now, at least we know a road we're going to go down by starting that process.
Melissa with this. Very good.
Awesome.
Okay, new business, personnel matter. This must require an executive session.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that word's executive.
This will be a brief executive session?
It will be, but it's required before these other items.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, go into executive session, four oh five, six, A dash one.
Okay, it's personnel matter. I'll second.
Six fifty-five.
Okay. Very good. Can I have a motion come back into general, out of executive, into general session?
I make a motion, come out of executive session, we're at four oh five, six, A dash one, at seven seventeen.
Second. All in favor? Salary increases. We had an opportunity in our executive session to consider the salary rate increases for employees and so on, and decision was made to do that seven percent across the board. So with that, David, if we could have a, a motion?
I make a motion, we increase the salaries of the town employees, well, make sure we do that. Some of them get different.
Some of them, how would you characterize those?
I would say based on how it was presented in the budget season.
How, okay.
Presented at budget season for the year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, I'll second. Any comment? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. IRS mileage rate.
So I gave you an email, just letting you FYI, letting you know that that was increasing to, is it sixty, oh, I'm forgetting, sixty-two point five effective July first.
I'm sorry, did you say there's a memo on?
No, I, I printed it up just for myself.
Sixty-two point five cents?
Yes, so it was currently fifty-eight point five.
Oh, okay, that's right.
So it's going up to sixty-two point five effective July first.
I'm sorry? Okay.
So it's just information, I mean, we've always followed the IRS.
Just automatically, we don't need a motion.
No, no.
Very good. Thank you. Resignation?
So this comes from our land use secretary, Jason Sevigny. Please accept this letter as a formal notification, resigning my position as land use secretary with the town of Acton on July eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you much for the opportunity to work with the position the last year. I've greatly enjoyed and appreciated the opportunities. I bring them new skills I've mastered and excel in organizing law books throughout my career. She wishes the town of Acton success, successfully, sincerely, Ashley Flynn. She has a life-changing event and is leaving the state of Maine. Very excited for her and her new opportunity.
Very good, thank you. Does, did, does this require a motion?
Uh, yes, to accept her.
Okay.
Usually you want to initial it and file it away in a personal file.
Well, I guess we'll, I'll make a motion, we accept Ashley Flynn's resignation from, quote un.
Second. All in favor?
I guess I'll.
For the, for the fire department, thank you for the added time to consider this. I, I think I'll have an opportunity to talk about how to handle these exceptions to policies in the future. I appreciate the circumstance that you're in. I'm fine with moving forward with, with the purchase. David, would you like to make a motion on this?
I make, I'm going to make a motion, we forego the bid process to expedite the Stryker purchase.
I'll second it. Any comment, discussion?
Well, just to be clear, there's two purchases, not just the Stryker, so.
Yeah, what's the other one? The Stryker.
The, the Lucas, what do we call them, Wayne?
The C R, mechanical friction device and hollows.
As he said. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank the chief for me. All right.
Should we initially, Jen?
Yes, please.
Okay. I gotta initial this.
Get this all done before we get too far ahead of ourselves here. There's nothing, there's just the terms on the end of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appointments. Committee appointments.
So you have a pile of them. So you have a pile of them per your instruction. I reached out to everybody on there. I still need to do the Mary Grant. Have a couple of committees that we'll do next week, but everybody on there. The dates are according to past practice on that committee and everyone has confirmed that they want to be reappointed to that committee.
So what capital improvement, what capital improvement we'll do.
Cemetery, cemetery. Cemetery, planning board, planning board. Rec, rec committee. Okay.
Okay, so what we start with us here? Okay, I guess I'll make a motion. To reappoint Wayne Missu and Joyce Bachy to the capital improvement, as a capital improvement member until, oh, given on the hand of twenty-ninth of June, two thousand twenty-two, until six thirty of two thousand twenty-four. They're both the same.
Second. All in favor? Motion passes.
Okay, this one all, okay. I make a motion. We appoint Lori Clark to the recreation committee until six thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Should ask any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor?
Okay, where are we here? We are down the cemetery committee. They're all the same. Yep. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Steve Perrello, Gerald Carter, Lois Missu, Tracy LaBassa, and Kenneth Allen to the cemetery committee until six thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Second. All in favor? Okay, motion passes.
And planning board. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Quo. What is it? Quo? Is that how you pronounce that? Okay. And Christopher Whitman to the planning board until six thirty, twenty-four.
Second. All in favor? Motion passes.
I picked the night when I can't talk and.
Are there any others, David? Is that it?
I believe that's it.
Give us a moment while we sign these. There you go.
Thank you.
That would be the last one. Nice. Where are we now?
Is one of these on? In your pile?
Is this the CEO policy?
Draft.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Next item is the CEO draft policy.
So over the last few weeks, we've been kind of talking and referencing a policy. It was more of a standing in, you know, a standing policy that we followed, but nothing in writing regarding complaints and inquiries. So we've asked the code officer to draft something up. This is a first draft and there are some, some changes. I haven't had a chance to go through with him, but I've got a couple of minor ones for you. But you can take this to review for next week, but really what we're, what we need to get on the same page about is a determination of what we expect from our code officer. So in regards to these complaints or inquiries, you know. So if someone comes in and says, what's going on with all the tree cutting on West Shore Drive? Is that a complaint? Is that an inquiry? Is that something they actually put their name on? They're asking a question. He doesn't know anything about. Do we expect him just to go and look into it now that he's heard about it? But the property owners often, once it falls down and trickles, the property owner wants to know, how did you find out about this tree cutting? So does he go back to that? Is it a complaint per se where you're actually saying, you know, there's too much junk in my neighbor's yard and I want you to do something about it? You know, there's a fine line. So we're trying to give him guidance on at what point, you know, he drives by, you know, if he's just driving by notifying, noticing something, we expect him to look into it. But if someone's just in conversation asking, do you, are you expecting them to fill this out? He's, he's not sure what the difference is and where that kind of stands.
So who has drafted this?
He drafted this.
He drafted this. I, um, I would imagine there is a best practice here for code enforcement officers dealing with this because these are, I would imagine, pretty generic issues that can arise in any town. And I would imagine that the profession has developed some.
Standards.
Some standards. And so my question is, how does this align with those standards? Is there a best practice in the industry and is that what we're adopting? If not, why? That would be my question, David.
Well, I think we, this is something that was for a couple of years now that I've, we've been talking about this. And the issue was when people just call up and honestly make a complaint.
Or mail letters and we're getting that.
Mail letters, you know, no name on it. And then you, then you got this, who do you, you go to look at something, who you, who you're going to call, tell them, I looked into it. Because nobody called to tell, I looked into it. So, and you do have the, the neighbors that will make frivolous complaints just because. So we came up with the idea of, okay, let's get this in writing. That way there, like say you take the H Road for instance, okay? There was claims made that the code officer didn't look into it, okay? But we didn't know there was a complaint and there was nothing there to say we had a complaint. So my idea was, okay, if there's a complaint, we needed some sort of paper trail to say the complaint was made. That way there, if, if the code officer doesn't react to the complaint, at least we have a timestamp saying, hey, Kate, you made this complaint. He took two weeks to come back to me. At least we know it was two weeks.
I guess he's trying to figure out the fine line between, is it a complaint or just an inquiry? If you just ask about, you know, what's going on on a particular road or, you know, do they have those, all the, you know, it's an inquiry. Do we want everything that's brought to his attention? Because I think last week we had agreed to change the wording of it.
Inquiry. And I have no problem with that. But if somebody goes, the code officer says, hey, are you allowed to cut trees beyond a hundred feet? Okay, that's an inquiry because my next of neighbor is doing it. You're allowed to do that. That's inquiring. If you go in and say, my neighbor is breaking the law. I want you down there taking care of it. That's a complaint. So I, I don't believe either one. You should be able to ask the code officer a question. If you're complaining about the next of neighbor and you want him to do something, that's when you have to, I believe you ought to have it in paper. Because of that point, you know, and then you got legal stuff that comes into it too. Whether or not the code officer was doing his job and this and that, who made the complaint? How many complaints were made? If there was, you know, because, you know, some people can overcomplain until they get the right, right answer. That, that's what this takes care of.
But I guess what he's concerned with is the fact that an inquiry, you're changing the words of a complaint to make it an inquiry. You're still wanting to go out and look at if he now knows about it.
If he's, if he's.
Because of someone's.
Then he got one on paper.
Then you say you want those in writing?
If he's, if someone's inquiring saying, okay, you know, like I said, they cut within a hundred feet. Okay, are they allowed to do that? The code officer should be able to answer that question rather than spot without looking at it.
But if he says, my neighbor is cutting with a hundred feet, is that okay?
If he's making the complaint, then he has to put that on paper.
Is there a requirement related to freedom of information request? If, if, if an inquiry or a complaint results in the code officer going forward and following and approaching the property owner about an issue? Do they have a right to know?
Yes.
They do. So it seems to me if the code officer is going to be approaching a property owner, it needs to be in writing. So you can support that FOIA request.
And it also helps the code officer too. It doesn't look like he's just snooping around. There was an actual complaint. It's, here you go. Or obviously if he's in the area and he sees it, yeah, he's got to go look at it because that's his job.
But if it's not a complaint, it's an inquiry, but he's learned this information through the inquiry, you're not expecting him to follow up with it because it wasn't a complaint in writing.
There's got to be a best practice.
I'm just saying, there's, I'm not sure.
I guess I'm confused. I guess I'm confused here. Inquiry, if, if they're inquiring whether or not they're doing, they're legit.
Yeah.
It's no different than a complaint. It's just a better way to say it.
So if I get, if I get somebody to say, there's activity going on down the road here, do they have a permit? Is that a inquiry or a complaint?
That's an inquiry. It's a little different. I don't, I don't think the inquiry and the complaint is really much different.
I don't either. I'm not quite sure I get it either.
Okay.
So it's really, is this something that would create a requirement on the part of the code officer to go and look into it, approach the property owner to find out more details about what's going on? It ought to be in writing, but I still think there's a best practice here and we ought to just. This, there's a professional group, I assume, for code enforcement officers? They, I'm sure they've got some professional standards that have been established by the practice. Let's find out what they are and not try to reinvent the wheel. That, that's my take on it. Sound good? Any comment about this?
Wouldn't it be simplified if whatever form or you're talking about, there has to be a paper trail on it? If on that paper trail, you had like a check a box, whether it was a complaint or an inquiry, you check whatever box. And on the emails that you get, as far as nobody is presenting their name or letters that you get with no name or something like that, then wouldn't there be a policy or you could make part of a policy that would say, unless you state on there that this is a complaint, they will all be handled as inquiries? I mean, it's kind of simple to me.
I think it's all the same in itself anyways. I mean, a complaint and inquiry, I mean.
Let's just ask the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joyce.
David, it's all the same. You know that. It's all the same. Chapter one thousand in the land use in the law book, Maine law, MSR, whatever. Chapter one thousand gives you the answers to all of that. It's right there, what he does. I can tell you in the past, an anonymous complaint was pitched. If it's anonymous, anonymous.
That's what we're trying to get away from.
I, I understand.
You know.
But if, if it's.
Well, no, that's what you agree with. You want them pitched, right? That's what you want.
Well, wait a minute.
She's saying that if it came in anonymous, the code officer is not to deal with it.
Yeah, exactly. That's what we're talking about. We're in the same page here. Yeah, I agree with her.
Okay, no, I thought so.
That was in the trash. I thought you were throwing in the trash. So.
If it's anonymous.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not dealt with. If, if, if it's, sometimes these things can be checked out like this. You go to the mapping system that we have, Google map, you can see the differences right there. It used to be done that way all the time. And it still is.
I don't really feel that by someone inquiring about a possible issue down the road, even if it was put in the file, they were in there. I don't think it's a big deal.
Oh, I don't think so either.
Especially, you know, obviously if it is a big deal, it's because someone did something wrong.
You can see, no, he's on the right side of the boundary line and a little, I age myself. But a little pink slip goes in. Got a call yesterday from Mr. Wunschel checking on the boundaries on West Shore Drive. Checked them out. They were fine. Slip goes in the file.
I think more or less what this is, what we're trying to accomplish here is trying to make sure that I want to see the code officer also covered, that if something's come in, that he's addressed it. It's, everything's got a timestamp. This is more or less for him too, to help him out.
But chapter one thousand has.
Which isn't part of our zoning, but remember we went through that with the previous code officer with chapter one thousand. But, and maybe I'm not, I'm not saying clearly, but the issue is that the code officer in the department may be spending time, extensive time on calls or inquiries that come in that are not in writing. So, you know, and I got to pick on the two of you because you're sitting there. So do you want him to do that? So Tom comes in and just says, does, you know, David have a permit to do, you know? He's, he's just asking. He's just asking a question. He's not making a complaint. You know, he's taking that inquiry and going with it. And, I mean, you know what I'm talking about, David. I'm trying to avoid, you know, using real examples.
Yeah.
So he doesn't have, you know, that somebody just inquiring. So he has nothing in writing from these people.
Then he shouldn't be going out and checking on it.
And that's what needs to be said and clear.
Let's, if, I generally agree with everything that's been said here. I just would like to understand what the professional standard is for this.
I think every town will probably deal with it separately.
Everybody's going to deal with this separately. And the thing is, is what we're trying to do is set an example here that when there's a complaint, like, okay, we take up on Young's Ridge, that whole deal there, okay? It's awful hard to cover for our, not say cover, but protect our code officer when people are saying, there's complaints made here and he didn't do his job. Well, how do we know? We made the complaint, we made it verbally.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I want it written so that way there we can reprimand our code officer because we have this paper trail. But if we don't have the paper trail on all of this, then we leave ourselves all hanging. That's why I think this is a really good thing to have.
Okay. So we'll do a little more work on it and we'll put it on the future agenda. County Road. David?
David.
So received a phone call today. I've had a couple of different calls, but this one here came in the town hall today. The concern is that because we have funneled between shutting, the state shutting down Milton Mills Road to big truck traffic going over the bridge. And then we shut down French Street. Now what we have done is now funneled everybody down County Road. And so the complaints come in that it's like a pit road now. And whether or not we should be doing anything about it. And I, I had a feeling this was going to be an issue. Adam, you mind coming up here? Because obviously you're going to be dealing with this. So, so we, we really ought to address the issue. Because like I said, we've funneled them all to that one spot. So I knew that was going to happen. Because when I did it, when I posted Harper, I funneled them all down Sanborn Road. Being the road commissioner at the time, I didn't think it was a good idea. I posted my own road because it would look like I'm abusing my powers, so I didn't. But unfortunately, we're, we're getting all the truck traffic out down those two roads now because of what we've done. And because we had to because of bridge down the road. And now the bridge over on Ellis Side. So these roads are getting pounded at this point. So.
Yeah, and that road's in disrepair. It's only getting worse.
So you are, you are planning on working on that road at some point. So.
They were supposed to pave it last year and then they all got COVID and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Still haven't got back. They remarked it this spring, but.
So it is on the plans.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm going to get some of it done.
So I really think that we ought to, we ought to do the same thing with that road as we did French Street.
So how will they get to where they need to go?
They can go right where it was. So what I always do, okay, I mean, it's going to be tough for say someone who lives down, say down, parway down Milton Mills Road to go all the way around.
Yeah, like.
These guys that are trucking, they're all using as a shortcut to get the two oh two and stuff. They can go right down one oh nine like we always do up Oak Street. They're going that way. They're just as fast. So I wouldn't put my trucks down through that Ruga, Blueberry Hill and stuff like that crazy, you know, so, but.
Oak Street is in Springfield?
Yeah, two twenty-four, whatever you want to call it. The unfortunate part about this deal is the state has incurred this on us by shutting that bridge down. And I think we've got to look at our best interests here and I, I think we ought to post that road also.
County?
Yeah.
So we're going to have to put something in the beginning of Milton Mills too. And the intersection, we're going to leave Sanborn open.
Yeah. I mean, where I worked out, where I've been doing a lot of work, that's our, every road's got no through trucks on it for a reason, you know? And myself, the state, state roads, they can, they can pay to have them fixed. But they're, because of their neglect on that bridge, they're, they're beating our roads up at this point.
Absolutely.
So what do you think, Tom? We do have a policy.
I, I believe, we have what?
We have a policy to do this. That's why we've been able to do the other roads.
What is that policy?
We're allowed to, we're allowed to post roads.
Post that roads.
We used to only have a policy for just seasonal postings.
So it's really the, the truck owners are the ones who are going to be affected by this adversity?
Large commercial trucks. One thing that I, I like to point out that there was confusion when you post these roads, you're allowed to go down those roads if you're working on that road or whatever. You just can't use it as a shortcut.
Yep.
What's the process for notifying the, the firms in town about this? Do we just post it and that's it?
You can.
We just post it?
Post it.
Yeah. Because the problem is you'll, you got all over the place that come in.
Yeah.
You never, never get them all. I think we could make a phone call to them and let them know that's going to be happening. and let them know that's gonna be happening, the ones that are the frequent flyers, the ones that's got the pits that are...
Yeah, I mean, the goal is to slow it down.
People on County Road?
Yes.
And the truck volume has increased significantly on that road?
We've funneled all of them to that one road.
It's not a very wide road.
No, Samborn Road's the same thing. They're just, they're using it as a cut across to get the County Road to go across, so...
Any discussion on this? I'd love to just give people a chance to weigh in.
I mean, I'll just use the H Road, for example. Yeah, I mean, those guys own pits up there, but I mean, I get phone calls two, three days a week about it. I mean, you post that road, people find out you do that, you know, you're gonna, I think you're gonna get the repercussions. So, I mean, at this point, he's gonna do something to the road, I mean, leave it open. I mean, it is what it is, honestly. I mean, it, what are you gonna do? If you post that one, might as well post Samborn Road and make them go right down.
Well, they, we, we probably should.
You know, I mean...
If you see what the road, the road's looking like down here by that culvert, you know, it's all settling in.
Well, even by your house, you can see the wheel ruts. I mean, I mean, that's just my thing. I mean, I think you're gonna get repercussions.
So you wouldn't post it?
I mean, personally, I mean, how are you going to? You're gonna get repercussions from people on the H Road.
Yeah, they're gonna say why they're not...
But there's a difference. The people on the H Road, okay, there's a big difference. The pits are on the H Road.
Well, I know, I know that, but I'm just saying it from like...
So they, they have to use that road coming out. But there's nothing saying they have to use Samborn and County to get to Lebanon.
Yeah, right. But I'm, I'm just thinking of like, the people, they come down here saying, well, if you post all these roads, why don't you, I mean, I get that, but I'm just...
If you post this road, you'll shut those businesses down.
What do you mean?
We can't legally post it. We can't...
No, I mean, they'll still go up there, but...
But that would be the effect, if it was posted, they couldn't, they couldn't get at their pits.
No, they could, because legally, because their pit is on the road that you posted, you'd be allowed to.
I'm just saying, but the, okay.
So a good example is Goose Pond Road. Instead of using H Road, Will's gonna, I mean, they're gonna start, what he's saying is that they're gonna start wanting the trucks not to travel through Goose Pond Road.
But they can't stop them anyways.
Why?
Because the pits are on Goose Pond Road.
Well, that one pit.
No, there's three of them down there.
On Goose Pond Road?
Yeah. So you can't stop that. So what it's doing is, it's all relevant if the pits are on that road. You can't stop them.
So would we post any road?
We could post San Page, so they didn't use that as a shortcut to get to Goose Pond.
The roads that there's no pit on.
Funnel them to the main run. That way, that keeps us off the side roads that are getting all beat up. It's not fair to the people on County Road, they're gonna take all the truck traffic because the state didn't do their job. It's not fair to the taxpayer, because that road's gonna get all beat up because the state didn't do their job. So they can cut across the 202. Just keep them on the state road. I don't wanna post them anymore than anybody else, but this situation's a little different. We've funneled them to this one point. So they don't have any other choice when they get down there, go to that one point. From H Road here, they can take a right, they can take a left, and they can go wherever they want from there. We're not restricting anybody on this road. But on that, I think it's a different situation.
Any other comment? Thank you, Will. Okay, you may get a motion.
I mean, I, I think, you know, we ought to make a motion to post that road as, as soon as the road commissioner gets signs up, and make it effective.
And he knows what they're gonna say? Does that need to be part of the motion? Do you have a weight, or how are you gonna...
I think, I think what we ought to do this time, because there was confusion on the last signs, I think we ought to put a weight limit on it. We ought to put a weight limit, a 25, 99 GRVW, you know, that way there, we don't have to worry about empty trucks rolling back through. You know, it's on registered, registered weight.
Okay. I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any further public comment? Lori?
I have a short statement I'd like to read. Last week, I was asked by the rec director, Samantha Singleton, to join her to discuss the parking lot at the rec field that I previously started. I was immediately shut down from speaking by Mr. Wunschel, as I was not a committee head. I was upset by this and wanted to be sure I was not in the wrong, so by accompanying Samantha, so I checked policy and found nothing that said a committee head could not have someone accompany them at a selectman's meeting. I, however, did come across the Town of Act and Policy for Conduct of Elected and Appointed Officials. And these phrases especially stuck out to me. Town officials, while exercise, while exercising their office, conduct, conduct themselves in a manner that will instill public confidence and trust in the fair operations integrity of the Act and Town Government. And number three, conduct of town officials, the professional and personal conduct of town officials while exercising their office must be above approach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Town officials shall refrain from harassment, abuse of conduct, and intoxication, dishonesty, and unprofessionalism. And number five, conduct at public meetings, town officials shall prepare themselves for public issues and listen courtesy and attentively to all public discussions before the body. I feel that our elected officials have an obligation to every single taxpayer in this town to treat people with the utmost respect and courtesy, and I do not always feel that this is the case. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not even gonna comment to that.
No, I think it's, it's fine. Any further comment? Public comment? Okay. Announcements. Wednesday, July 6, Select Boarding, Select Board Meeting, 6:00 PM. I'm sorry, did you have? Okay. Thursday, July 7, Planning Board, 6:00 PM. Monday, July 11, Forest Conservation, 6:00 PM. Wednesday, July 13, Select Board, 6:00 PM. Wednesday, July 20, Select Board, 6:00 PM. Thursday, July 21, Planning Board, 6:00 PM. Wednesday, July 27, Select Board, 6:00 PM.
We also got a road committee meeting added today, which is Monday, July 25. That's 6:00 PM.
At 6:00? Very good. Thank you.
That's it, isn't it?
I believe that covers the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Great. Motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming.